Good morning, and welcome to the final meeting of 2023 of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, December 12th. We will be going into closed session. Madam Clerk, can you please read out the closed session item?
Item one pursuant to government code 54957.6 Conference with county designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins and Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organization: Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 2015.
And do we have anything that we need to report out from last meeting in closed session?
No, I believe that was done last session.
We're good?
Yes.
Okay, is there any public comments? Good morning, and welcome to the final meeting of 2023 for the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Please rise if you can for the pledge. We had a closed session scheduled at 8:00 AM, and we had the closed session. Madam Clerk, can you please read out from the closed session?
Closed session for today, December 12th, item one pursuant to government code 54957.6 Conference with county designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins and Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organization: Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 2015. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Do we have any staff announcements this morning? Okay, one at a time. Don't rush the podium. Okay, none in the room? Do we have any online?
There are no online requests.
All right, well, that's first for a while. Must be the end of the year. Lisa is here. All right, we'll move on to the next item, is a general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on our consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Are there any public comments this morning? None in the room? Wow, something's up, okay. No staff announcements, no public comments. All right, hey, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any board members wish to pull a consent item?
Yes, I'd like to pull item number eight.
Supervisor Follendorf pulls number eight. Any other board member? Any staff member wish to pull an item off consent? No, any member of the public wish to pull anything off consent? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Open for a motion for the remainder of the consent minus number eight.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Supervisor Stoppa.
Taken.
Second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes 5-0. Supervisor Follendorf, you pulled item number eight.
Chair, actually, I should probably recuse myself of item number eight, so if it's all right, I'll zip out.
I have a couple questions, and hopefully maybe that can clarify some of the language of the agreement. One of the biggest things I'm concerned about is the date frame. My understanding, at least when I voted at the beginning of the year for the fiscal year, it was only supposed to be a one-year allotment, and I see this terming out at 2026, and I am worried about that. I know it says in there that there are options, but given the changes going on, I don't want there to be an assumption of intent that the county will be actually obligating these funds over the next subsequent years. So the date really concerns me on that, because that's not what I voted on and supported to give the one-year allotment. The other issue I have is in the cause of the marketing of tourism for the West Side. I thought this was supposed to be in conjunction with the current tourism marketing plan. So if it's not, what is the blueprint of where we're agreeing with what that what that marketing plan is going to be like? And I didn't see a plan attached to this agreement for this. And I'm asking because if the board, the majority of the board chooses to continue this in the next fiscal year and beyond, I want to see what that what were what the data points are, what is the plan that we're supporting on this? Because this, it just, it's not clear what that is. Also, the other thing is, I think this is a carbon copy of another contract, and the chamber is primarily a membership organization, and that's not in the mission statement or the vision of this. So I want to get that clarified because it seemed to be a copy and paste from another agreement, and that's not what the chamber really is. The chamber is a membership organization of businesses that are focused on the economic growth and supporting the small businesses, and this, it doesn't make sense to me on that. And then the other concern I had was in the liability, it just making it clear not just the board, but I wanted to see if there was any way to make it clear for the membership because it is a membership organization, not that liability, it just not, the board works off of the memberships, not just, not just them. And so I want to make sure that is the memberships understand what the board is agreeing to, and we're not holding the bag of any expectation from the county on the liability. But I don't know what that type of language would look like, but it is, it does concern me a little bit on some of this, since it is kind of a carbon copy from another agreement, and they don't really focus on the chamber.
Supervisor Follendorf through the chair. We can certainly revisit the timeframe in the agreement. As far as the marketing plan, I do believe someone from the chambers here, and perhaps they can address some of their plans for marketing, and we could request that they come back at a later date for presentation on exactly what their plans are for that. As far as the legal issues that you have raised with the agreement, as far as liability, I would let counsel speak to those.
You know, I hear what you're saying, Supervisor Follendorf. I think that from, you know, the, when we're looking at this agreement, the agreement obviously is between the county and the organization, and so, you know, we can only write in terms that binds the county and the organization. The relationship that the organization has with its membership and how they would or would not be liable for the board or the organization's dealings is as between them.
Yeah, but we're using public funds to give to an organization that is membership, supposed to be membership funding, and so what is the accountability of the memberships and ensuring that we're not having unintended expectations of what these funds to the public, of what they need to be using that money for? And so I just want to make sure that it's clear. I mean, I understand where the board is going, and, but I want to make sure that that extends beyond the board of what their memberships are supporting for the county to give this allocation of funds from them.
Okay, sorry, I probably misunderstood your question. So I don't see that as a li- as a, like, liability or indemnification question, that's more just what are the funds being used for, or the purpose of of the funds, which is something that could be, you know, further written into the agreement. Correct.
Yeah, but there's no blueprint. I mean, it's, I, it's like any other organization, we give money, but we also have a return of expectation of what the board and or whether it's a board or the, in this case, membership have an expectation, and I think it needs to be clear. And, you know, one of the biggest concerns I have is because of the rapid changes that are happening, and I don't know what that's going to look like in another year, and I'm concerned that they're going to be unintended expectations from this board of those funds because of membership expectations of the board, and they're not going to be able, to be frank, they're not going to be able to execute.
And so I think, and I don't want to speak for the CAO, but I do think that, you know, obviously, so the board budgeted these funds already, a budget. The intention with this agreement is to create some expectations, and I don't know what word you want to use, accountability for how the funds will be used. If if the board wishes to direct staff to revise this or put in different, then we certainly can, staff can certainly work on that and go back. Obviously, it'll require, you know.
Go back and start.
Correct, the chamber, we can't make unilateral changes, correct.
Supervisor Stoppa.
Oh, I did have some questions from some constituents on this, and just to make it clear, because it was specific on one of our expectations that we did discuss during the budget hearing, and part of the reason we are giving them the money is to bring up the amount of marketing for, you know, visitor-based and business-based on the West End of the county. And so in this part, with the money that we're giving them, the expectation is for them to bring that that marketing up to a certain level. But this doesn't bind the money from the member base to be able to market the rest of Calaveras County when it comes to businesses and everything. And so that's.
But this specifically.
I'm not talking to my constituents' question, Ms. Follendorf.
I know, but the contract says West Side, so.
No, I, I think.
So what I think your confusion is, because it's with our money, not the, not their money.
Correct.
The expectation with the money that we're giving them, the money that comes from their member base can go to the rest of the county wherever they want. That's, that's, that's pretty clear to me.
This is only for the 50,000.
Yeah, for the money that comes from us.
Chamber rep, you want to?
Hi, I'm Rachel Sparks. I'm the executive director, new of the Chamber of Commerce. Hi. So, yeah, the the focus with the money that we have been, that I have been given so far is we are working on promoting, yeah, the West End of the county specifically is kind of where most of it will go. We do not have a complete plan yet to kind of show that out, but I would definitely meet at a later date and be glad to present a full business plan for that money, if that's something that the board requests. So, yeah, I, sorry, a little nervous. Is there any specific questions I can answer right now?
Supervisor Garimendi.
I'm sorry, this isn't a specific question here. You've been on the job like three days. I don't think we can hold you.
Pretty, pretty, pretty new.
To be responsible, and I know there's been a break, so.
Yeah.
We should not expect that from you, but I think one of the things I just want to emphasize is that, you know, this money is to augment efforts for marketing on the West Side, and I'm going to include a lot of the North Side. And I want to make it very clear, I think we all understand this is an annual donation that we're making, so there's no guarantee, and we could be specific about that. But I also want to make it clear that the Visitors Bureau does not, this does not absolve them from their responsibilities from taking care of the West Side equally to what's going on on the Highway 4 corridor. We all value that corridor greatly for our economy, but this is an augmentation, not a replacement, and I want to make sure that everybody's aware of, at least, that's my interpretation of our intent.
You know, I agree with Supervisor Garimendi on this. The CBB, we give, year after year after year, we give them hundreds of thousands of dollars, and primarily their focus is on Highway 4 corridor. And for all the years I've been sitting here, always saying we need some representation on the West Side, equal it out, and we're starting to see that somewhat. The CBB was at the craft fair in Valley Springs at the grade. So we are seeing it, and it's truly appreciated, but this is, it was given direction when we had it at, and at budget, and this is part of the agreement. And again, like county council says, if we change any of this agreement right now, it's going to have to go back and recirculate it around and redone, and it's taken since budget time to get it here and now because of a lot of things that were said and were being negotiated and talked about. But this is the basic agreement that was, I think it was brought to us before, and we agreed. So those are my comments.
I'm just concerned about using the augmentation if the application is still CBB, so where and where is that, because at least my intent was to help bring the chamber and CBB more together in a unified collaborative effort, and so to ensure that the businesses are being represented, but what, and that's one of the biggest, what did that look like? Because if you have someone who is fairly new, I mean, how are we going to, and how are we going to support that unity rather than continuing to be too separate and be siloed? I get the mission statements and divisions are very, but at the same time, they're still trying to bring in those dollars into this county, continue to support all of these services, but I, where did that, what does that augmentation look like? And that goes back to the marketing plan. I just want to make sure that there's expectations of what the intent is going to be truly reflected because if we put this investment and we have a return on that investment, then that's something to discuss about in the next year, but we don't have any data points of where we're going to be able to support that, of how those dollars are going to, we're going to see those dollars returned, whether it be in sales tax or TOT or what have you. And that's why I'm asking for a marketing plan. It's not, I want to make sure that this investment, so we can continue to support this collaborative effort of bringing the two entities together to maximize organizations really having this county to do the best for our small businesses and tourism.
Mr. Chair, I agree, Amanda, and I think that bringing these things together is, we're well on the course for that, on a new day. I understand you're wanting to have accountability in a marketing plan. I asked the CBB for seven years to have that, while we gave them millions of dollars. Seven years later, we have an agreement where they've, just this year, we are first year of reviewing their business plan and marketing plan this year. We still haven't got the final one yet from them. So I think this is a good path forward, and I concur that we should do that, they should come together, and I think we should have a little bit of patience. Certainly, we showed endless patience for the CBB at the cost of millions of dollars, and we're having a positive outcome. So that's all my comments.
Supervisor Stoppa.
I've seen them come together consistently over the years. They've worked together phenomenally. I think, I see this relationship building. I see it as a positive thing for the county as a whole, you know, to help get two entities, you know, more latitude to collaborate, it's a good thing. What's your name again?
Rachel Sparks.
Rachel, Rachel Sparks. Well, welcome, and we look forward to working.
I do.
Sorry, go ahead, Karen.
I do have one request. Is it possible that that you could come before the board and give us update reports, say quarterly or the next year, and just give us a report on where we are of this marketing plan and what's going on?
That sounds excellent, yeah.
And just to be clear, so that we're all on the same page, the the agreement requires those things of the chamber, that's the idea, right? In exchange for the TOT funds, they will share a marketing plan, make presentations to the board, et cetera. So that is drafted into the agreement.
I wanted to make it quarterly. It does say they come forward, but I'm trying to make at least quarterly, at least the first year here that we've given you the money, and so it makes everybody else feel more comfortable you guys are working together.
Absolutely, yes.
Any other questions or comments? And public comments, questions? Any public in the room? No? How about online?
Cheryl McEwen Harper, District 2, resident, and I really like what you just said about accountability. I read the agreement, and I did not see that we will be, they were being asked to report on this as a new program. You know, all I saw was that the contract read once a year next year, so I really like what we, what we just talked about in keeping them a little more accountable on a new program. And then I'd really like to see that level of accountability with the Visitors Bureau. Thank you.
Any other public comments in the room? Seeing none, is there any online?
There are no online requests.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board.
So to clarify, we're not recommend, we're not recommending changing the year?
We're not what?
Recommending to change the year.
Oh, I think we probably should, because we agreed to one year on fiscal. This is the one part I heard clearly from you that I agree with, Amanda, is that it says three years in the contract right now, and we probably should bring it back, because we only agreed to a one year at this time that, and then it would come back and we would approve it after that. It's not, it's not a three-year thing that we agreed to at the budget time.
Mr. Chair, for me, I agree, Ben, it's, we didn't agree to three. I think we're making that very clear in the public, that this is an annual thing. I think, I don't want to speak on behalf of council and CAO, but I imagine this is just to make sure we don't have to do this annually.
So Supervisor Garimendi through the chair. Counsel and I have conferred, and we could amend the timeframe in the agreement, and if you would give me the authority to sign with that one amended change.
So we could vote all in now?
You could, yes. So, right, and and to be clear, while it is a three-year agreement, it is very clear that these are TOT funds that are fully within the board's discretion to allocate or not allocate at budget time in whatever amount the board chooses. And the idea was, as you say, Supervisor Garimendi, to do a three-year agreement so that in the event the board does allocate funds for the next two years, we would already have this in place, and that does mirror the agreement with the Visitors Bureau. That said, yes, if the board, if a majority of the board were to direct staff to go back to the chamber and and make it a one-year agreement and give the CEO the authority to sign, we could certainly do that as well. It's completely up to you.
Thanks on that. Do I have a motion?
From what I'm hearing, it doesn't matter either way. We can change the amount of funds it is, even if it's a three-year agreement.
That's correct. These are general funds fully within the board's discretion to allocate at budget.
I'm willing to make a motion for not amending it and moving forward with the contract as it is.
Motion by Supervisor Stoppa. Second by Supervisor Garimendi. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Passes 3-1. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number 29, this is informational item from Economic and Community Development. This is received presentation from the Calaveras County Economic and Community Development Department regarding the 2022-2023 activities and from the California Association of Local Economic Development on the economic development trends and opportunities. Kathy Galino.
Good morning, Chair Tofanelli, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino. If I can have just a moment to set up, I'd appreciate it.
How about five minutes? How about five minutes? You need a five-minute break to set up. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready to go. As soon as we unlock that, I'll let you, it's unlocked.
It's a secret door. Good morning. Can you hear me? So.
It's on.
It's on. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Sorry about that. So with me today, I have Gurbak Sahoda and Michelle Stevens with CALED. They're going to be giving the presentation first, kind of going at a high level and looking down, and then I will go into detail in the presentation that I have prepared. So let me switch the presentations.
Where's the? I apologize, I didn't realize you had two presentations.
Yes. Sorry about that.
Chair, can we take a quick break then, please?
Suppose, can we have five minutes?
Five minutes? Take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we're back in session. Kathy, are you ready?
I am ready. Thank you, Chair Tofanelli, Honorable Board. Today with me, I have Gurbak Sahoda, who is the president and CEO of CALED, which is the California Association for Local Economic Developers, and with her is also Michelle Stevens, and she's the program director at CALED. So they're going to start with their presentation, and I will follow up.
Thank you, Kathy. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay? I'm loud without the mic. I don't know if this needs to be any closer, so just tell me, is it?
Is the mic on, Susan?
Yes.
Okay.
Susan's okay. Okay, awesome. So, good morning. It's great to be back in Calaveras and to see some familiar faces. If you're not familiar with us, with me in particular, as Kathy said, my name is Gurbak Sahoda. I'm the president and CEO of the association. We've been around for more than 40 years. We are one of the largest economic development organizations in the country and definitely the largest in California. We represent hundreds of jurisdictions across the state, so local economic developers, we believe that so much of what happens in economic development, creating economic opportunity and driving the economy, happens with local decisions and local work that you all do, as evidenced by the the item that you had before us. So really pleased to be here and pleased to be back here. Some of our history with Calaveras is prior to the pandemic, we had a grant from the Federal Economic Development Administration. Our program director, Michelle Stevens, was working here locally to help with, set up the CBRC. So we do have some history here, and I know some of you know Michelle as her family is So we do have some history here, and I know some of you know Michelle as her family is, how many generations here now?
Well, my generation's the sixth.
The sixth generation here. So really excited to be here. We rarely get a chance to come up to the foothills and experience the beauty. It's almost always for work. So it's nice to have the drive up. And I talked to you a little bit today about trends that are happening in economic development. I'd like to tell you that I'm going to share new information that you've never heard before, but I suspect that a lot of what we see happening across the state and nationally is what you guys are experiencing here locally as well. So if you'll please advance to the next slide. So you're going to have to forgive me. The slides that I have are more reminders for me so I don't forget to tell you stuff, less like informative for you. So before I get into the trends, one of the things that would really be helpful, because I want to make sure we're speaking to the issues that matter to you. If you don't mind taking like a minute apiece, just telling us who you are and why you think economic development is important, or if you have a specific question you'd like us to address. Because again, we don't get up here very often, so if there's something that we can do while we're here, or information that we can provide during our short presentation, I want to make sure that we do that. So, Mr. Chair, however you'd like to do that, if you want to have specific supervisors or do it in a specific order, just a quick who you are, and if there's anything you want us to address, or your interest in economic development would be helpful.
Martin Hubbard, you want to say anything?
Martin Hubbard, District Three, which is from Vallesito to the Alpine border. So my district raises over five thousand feet in elevation. It's very diverse in that respect. I would say economic development in the Upper Highway Four corridor is essential. We have a lot of outdated buildings, abandoned buildings. And it used to be a thriving area. It's more of a drive through area at the moment. And I would look to hearing from you how we could turn that around.
Thank you.
Jack Guerra Mindy, District Two, I represent the north side of the county, down to Valley Springs, including those people who live on the other side of the Fourth Crossing. I do have territory over there, the Stevens and the Ponte family. So good to see you. Thanks for, it's always good to have local folks coming home. We need help. Most of my businesses, actually almost all my businesses are small businesses. One person, maybe two people, and they need assistance. Startup assistance, it's not a lot, but just enough to get going. It's very difficult to make it as a small business, especially in things like retail in my district. So keeping our downtowns alive and vibrant, not looking at landing a microchip processing manufacturing company is a great ambition. We've got immediate needs too.
Thank you.
Amanda Follendorf, I represent District Four, which now encompasses the city limits down through Copperopolis to the county line. And for economic development is the investment that the county puts in to allow for developers and small business owners to come in and want to start their businesses here. I think one of the challenges we have, especially when you look down in the lower copper area is infrastructure, making sure that a lot of that is in place for people to want to put those developments in. And so what did that look like for attracting? Business, not only just business attraction, but housing as well, to entice more housing so we can keep people from commuting and things here locally. And not just in this district, but just across the board. And I think there are some of the huge challenges and why investments are not being made in this county.
Ben Stoppard. Ben Stoppard, District Five, Rancho Calaveras, down to Highway Twenty-six, the San Joaquin County Line, San Slaus County Line. We are primarily a bedroom community. Seventy percent of the workforce travels outside the county for employment. You know, expanding business opportunities, not even necessarily in my district because there isn't much area to do that in my district. But expanding business opportunities and bringing some more of our people home to work would be phenomenal. And then one thing you did say is, you know, comments, because you don't make it up here very often, try to make up a little more often.
Absolutely.
I'm Supervisor Tofanelli, District One. My district runs from the county line in Wallace, primarily up through Highway Twelve and up to Forty-nine here, up to, including San Andreas. We, the situation is economically here for businesses, it's hit or miss on a consistent basis. I mean, you have, and that's probably true throughout. But the smaller businesses that we have and a lot of it, Ben, most of the people that live in Ben's district come into District One because again, his district is more rural and there's not a lot of commercial property there available for them to do, although there's a lot of people that work from home. But we're looking to keep those people, a lot of my people go into the valley to work too. And we're looking to help businesses here expand and bring people here to work and keep them here in the county working.
Thank you. That's really helpful and it certainly resonates with a lot of what we hear, not just from rural communities, urban communities. Now, go through a couple of slides just to talk to you, big picture about what's happening in the environment. And I'm going to do a quick run back down of the things that you all brought up and make sure I've addressed each of them. So I'm going to talk quick because I think I have like five minutes. So the current environment, prior to the pandemic, and we talk about economic development as being the creation of wealth through which community benefits are realized, you know, and that's a really clear definition from our perspective, but it's a broad definition, right? It's how do you create economic opportunity, help businesses thrive so they can then employ residents so that they can thrive? And then you generate revenue that helps your coffers so you can provide the services that your residents expect. We see it as really circular and really important work, again, most of which that happens at the local level. One of the things that happened during the pandemic, and I suspect again that you're hearing some of this here, if not certainly in the state rhetoric, is the way that people are talking about economic development. Doesn't necessarily sound like the business case for economic development that we used to. A lot of it's around social justice issues, around equity comments like, you know, we haven't provided economic opportunity for everyone. What does that look like? Who's being left behind and how do we address that? So even in the programs and the funding that we see coming out from the state and federal level, you see that thread that goes through that conversation when people are now talking about economic development. It's less about, you guys were talking about metrics of success for the contract that you have prior. It's very difficult sometimes to create metrics around some of that social language around what economic development looks like. In the past, you would see measures that were either job creation or how many empty buildings do you have? You know, what is your, what is your workforce leakage look like? You know, how many of a specific industry do you have here? What's your competitive advantage and disadvantage? A lot of that language might be happening at the local level, but it's not necessarily happening in the discourse that you hear out and about around economic development. So that's a very noticeable change that we see. And in some places, it's absolutely good conversation that it needs to be had. But the challenge is, we're also seeing a change in the people that are doing economic development at the local level. It's not necessarily, you know, folks that have been in the profession twenty, thirty years. It's not necessarily folks that came in with the same mindset of I want to help businesses thrive. And in some cases, it's not local government, it is a nonprofit or a community based organization. That shifts what economic development looks like at the local level. It makes it even more important that public entities like counties and cities stay at the table, either as the driver of economic development or a very active participant in economic development. You know, it's great to see that you guys have Kathy as a dedicated economic developer and that she has been here for so long because she sees the shift the same way we do and has an understanding of how to change that language to make sure that she's bridging those two worlds. Not just the the social piece of what economic opportunity looks like, but the metrics that you expect to see from a solid economic development program. So we're seeing a big change in the people and the language and how it's implemented. The one thing I don't think has changed is economic development is about strategically creating your preferred future. That's a message we share over and over again because again, in some of that conversation, what we're seeing, and I absolutely understand why, is a look back to where, you know, who did we not help? And how do we fix that moving forward? But in that conversation, what can't be lost is what do we want our cities and counties, our state, to look like in the future? What are we creating for the next generation? So the conversation about filling those buildings, getting more folks up. Great to hear the two of you talking about how I might not have space in my district to have more businesses, but you do, so we should find ways to help your area thrive so our workers can stay here. One of the biggest challenges we see in rural communities, and I would say probably now a little bit in the state as well, children that get educated and don't have an opportunity to come back, so they don't come back. This is a longstanding concern, and I don't think that this is a new trend. I think it's a trend we don't talk about enough. One of the other pieces of that is what's happening in our rural communities post pandemic. We do know that during the height of the shutdowns, the state auditor did a report on the funds that were going to rural communities versus their urban counterparts in California. And there was a stark difference in the amount of funding that rural communities were getting per resident. So has that changed? Are you guys getting the support that you need higher up? And that's something we watch for carefully. I know that you're actively engaged with R C R C, which also plays a critical role in making sure that, you know, we're watching for resources for you or ways to help for your programs. But what's happening with rural communities is, I think, a huge concern, especially for organizations like ours. We have a rural exchange where the rural cities and counties in California come together to talk about economic development. Kathy's attended most of them, and it's really interesting to see how the issues have shifted again from our business case discussion on economic development to we're having issues with homelessness, mental health, housing, infrastructure, broadband. So it's much bigger than just the conversation about jobs, economic opportunity, and how to help businesses. So I suspect you're seeing that as well. We're certainly seeing it across the state. Next slide, please. So a couple of quick myths. I always make sure I include this slide, and most of it is to make sure we're all talking about economic development in the same way. In this change of language, in the change of the environment, one of the things we definitely want to be clear on, what are the metrics of success look like? Just as you were talking about that contract, what does success look like? It's not only about jobs. It's really important that you all be clear about that. We don't know what the economy is going to look like if we are going to see a recession. We know the budget challenges at the state level. If the only thing your economic development program can hold it, hang its hat on is the number of jobs created, that's going to be problematic. It's also how do you help the folks that are currently employed stay employed? How do you help your entrepreneurs start businesses? So that metric's got to be much broader than just jobs created. Focused on attraction. So there is, it wouldn't surprise you to hear that, you know, when people think of economic development, they think of only chasing new businesses. I heard so many of you talk about the need to help current existing businesses. Economic developers understand that. You guys understand that. It's really important that you talk about that as a metric of success. Economic development is a pro-business lobby. Economic development is a pro-economy lobby. We care about what the economy is doing. We care that we're building out an economy that creates opportunity for everyone in a way that's consistent with our community values. And that's at the local level. Not every community in California is the same. So your metrics might be different community by community, and that's okay. Not all of California, not every city and county will have the same metrics, the same values that you want to see in your economic development successes. So we're not just pro-business. Connection to workforce, housing, specific industries, I mentioned to you a little bit. Some of the challenges we saw pre-pandemic and post-pandemic is the amount of funding that was coming out. You all know this from your position as elected. It's when there's more money, everyone can find a way to get a piece of that money, right? Especially if they need it to, whether it's a good cause or not. With economic development, there's a lot of money flowing from the federal and state level to support local economies. But what you saw were conversations and narratives around, I help small business. I'm all about economic development. We should get the funding. Wait, I do housing. You can't have economic development without housing. We should get money. I help workforce. We train workforce. Where workforce and economic development are the same thing, we should get all the funds. You should be really clear on how each of those pieces support the economy, but have a clear understanding that you have an economic developer that's working specifically to support your economy that should be touching all those pieces, or at least has a very clear role inside that framework. Because obviously workforce, housing and being clear on what your specific industries are that you want to help are important component pieces of your economic development strategy, but they're not the whole story of your economic development strategy. And you mentioned tourism earlier and the work that the chamber does with the already existing businesses. The final piece, we hear a lot that traditional economic development is not connected to people in place. And I would just say flat out, that's a false narrative. And in California, local communities, cities and counties have been the ones that have vested consistently in supporting their local economies, without a doubt. Again, as I mentioned, you guys have Kathy who's been on the staff for quite some time. The county supported our work when we had the Butte Fire Grant to set up the C B R C. I know that you all have played an active role, and we see this in every community. The notion that economic development is separate from what the community goals are, what residents need, I don't think that's accurate, but that is something that's out there and something for you all to be aware of if you're not hearing it. So big picture, those are some of the trends that we see right now, post pandemic. We've done, we've created a lot of materials to help people get really clear on what economic development is. We share it with the governor's office, of course, but also with our federal partners, our national partners, and at the local level. I'm going to circle back to talk about the things that you brought up. You spoke about the empty buildings and the concern about that. That's not an easy challenge to address because I do think one of the things, and Kathy will probably speak to this, is having a clear understanding of what the competitive advantages or disadvantages as well of your district. And if there's opportunities there that meet that assessment, and I think Kathy will be able to speak to that. Downtown, downtowns are critical. We've seen more investment in the California Downtown Association, certainly the Main Street programs. We know that those groups are critical to helping local economies thrive, especially in smaller communities. What has been difficult is finding somebody with technical expertise, sometimes in the community, that can help those businesses. So whether that work happens with Kathy or the chamber, that is one on one work. There's a lot of resources out there for small business. I just don't know how that connection happens between the amount of funds that are flowing at the state and federal level to get to the business without having a connector, whether it's your staff or someone that you have contracted with to get that information. But I think you have opportunity, even as the budget gap and the budget changes, there's still pots of money out there to support businesses, even if it's a startup. I think there's that seed grant program that you're familiar with. Let's see. Keeping people local, I think several of you said that. Again, that's really having a key understanding of what your local competitive advantages and disadvantages are. And maybe it is, if you know folks that are working from home, getting an understanding of what it would take to get them to maybe start their own business, what kind of business would they need in your community to keep them in your community? I mean, that's, sometimes that's one on one work. Sometimes that's, look, we've identified, we have fifteen people working from home in the same industry. Maybe there's a way we can support those folks in creating their own business. Or maybe there's a business that they're working for that would be willing to have a branch here so that they don't have to commute out. That's local boots on the ground work. That's not a, I can give you a big picture answer to that. That said, you guys have a lot of opportunity. I'm really encouraged that you continue to make investments as a county in economic development. I don't get up here often, but one thing that does, that's really nice to see is that when I do come up, it's not a conversation about, should you invest? It's a conversation about, okay, this is what's happening out there. We know that you guys are still continuing to do thoughtful work at the local level. So that was a lot in a short amount of time, and I'm going to now turn it over to my colleague, Michelle Stevens, who is local, but is certainly recognized as a state leader in economic development. And she's going to talk to you a little bit more about what's happening at the local level and some of the practices that we see that are happening. So, Michelle, thank you.
Thank you. Can you all hear me? Hopefully. Thank you for giving us the time today to talk about economic development. Kathy, can you, thank you. So I'm, when we discussed this presentation, I was charged with drilling down a little bit more in looking at what rural communities are doing. So Gerback's talked at a high level at the state and broad trends. And so now I'm going to dig a little deeper and discuss the rural. to dig a little deeper and discuss the rural opportunities. So first of all, though, I wanted to show, talk about what economic development looks like in practice. And if we're talking about the economy, there's a lot of different inputs that impact it. But if we're thinking about, you need to create a positive business climate, and what does that look like? Maybe, I mean, well, it definitely should include the long-term goals and vision, so that's the strategic planning element. That is what Gerbaks referenced, really thinking about what you want your community to look like in the future. How is it going to serve the needs of all of the residents? Business community support. A few of you mentioned that the businesses need help. In a rural county, it's, I don't want to say never will happen, but it's rare that it's going to be a brand-new business that hires 200 people. It's going to be those one- and two-person shops, maybe hiring one person. So reiterating what Gerbaks was saying, it can't just be like, oh, we're going to, we're going to create 500 jobs this year, because you're not going to be able to meet that more than likely. And so you need to measure your success in different ways and really look at, what does our county do? How can we help the people who live here? Skilled workforce is a part of it. I know Columbia College is just across the river, so are there opportunities to partner there? Like, just because it's across the river, I myself went there when I graduated. So it's an opportunity to combine both the college and what they provide, what your businesses need. So having that conversation together. If you see a specific industry growing, maybe Columbia can help provide opportunities to train the folks that will go into that industry. So really working with your resources that you have available. We also have Modesto JC, there's Delta and Stockton. There's a lot of opportunities, not to mention, you know, Stanislaw, Sac State. Clear regulations. This one's always up there because it's always a need. Often, when you talk to a business owner, they say, I just need to know how long it's going to take and what it's going to cost. And so clarifying that at the county level. Have your fees on the website. Make sure that folks know if you're pulling a permit, it's going to take X amount of days or months or whatever it may be, because if they know that, then they can plan on it. Public, private, public, public. So it's important to think public, public, too, because it's not always just like, okay, we're going to partner with a business. Sometimes it's partnering with your neighboring communities or the community college or whoever it may be, the SBDC, which I know was done with the CBRC originally. I don't know if that connection is still there. But looking at who you have in your quiver that you can pull an arrow and collaborate with, because especially in rural communities, you probably don't have the funding and you may not have the people. Not that the people you have aren't skilled enough, but they are more than likely doing quite a few things. So they could, there's only 24 hours in the day. So finding a way to partner and use each other's strengths to get closer to your goal. Next slide. So specifically, when we're thinking about economic development, I almost feel like this slide isn't important since you guys have already made an investment in economic development, but it's always good to have a reminder. There are a lot of benefits. When someone says, hey, the budget's tight, why are we going to spend any money on economic development? Number one, because economic development helps you grow that budget. Instead of dividing up the same small piece of the pie, grow the pie. I know that's a cliche and everyone's heard it, but there's a reason you've heard it. It's much better than a zero-sum game. Job development. This is really getting to the community part of it. If you have a good job that has good benefits, you can stay and grow in your community. And so balancing that with, like, I know tourism's a huge, a huge industry in Calaveras. How do those tourism jobs impact the community? Are they, are they higher level? And it's tough. Sometimes tourism jobs aren't higher-wage jobs. So trying to balance that and make sure that you guys have a broad economic base. And then business retention. Gerbaks said it, I'll repeat it. I think it's the most important part of economic development. Instead of chasing something that's out there and you don't know if it's going to work out, invest in the people who have already invested in your county. Business retention is important because those folks have already said, hey, I like it here. I want to be here. I'm going to, I'm going to plant my dream here and hope that it grows. So you already have, they already have one foot in, so now it's just help them grow. And a few of you mentioned that, that helping businesses grow is important. Next slide. Sorry, I should have told you a little bit ahead of time. So some examples, we already talked about it. Business outreach. This really is the one-on-one stuff. This is, business owners want to have an opportunity to see their representatives in a positive way. Getting your county, getting your tax bill is not a positive interaction. Finding out that you have a, you didn't pull the right permit and now you're going to get a fine, that's not a positive way. But having an economic developer on hand who's in the community and saying, hey, what do you need? And really listening to what they need. And sometimes that economic developer cannot help them with what they need. But a lot of water is carried just by hearing them and saying like, okay, I get that. That is a problem. I don't have a resource for that right now, but I will think about it and we will come up with some solution. Broadband development, you guys know this. An example I had was the Madera County broadband strategy and roadmap. So this, they took ARPA funding, which I know isn't here anymore, but like, broadband's a huge issue at the federal and state level. So the funding is out there. So, but they used that ARPA money to do the study and come up with their roadmap. And now they are moving on that path. And the 1.2 million contract with CalNet was just announced a few months ago. So they, they created the study, they laid the groundwork. What do we need? How do we get it? And now they're moving down that path. And so broadband is a key element of infrastructure, but you have all the other infrastructure needs as well. I know Supervisor Follendorf mentioned that in the copper area. So there are other resources available that may or may not work. There's different funding resources at the state level, tax increment funding, that may be a good fit for building infrastructure. It may not be. It all depends on how much, how much success you can have in that parcel after you make that investment, to see if it all pencils out. But those resources exist, and we have a lot of materials that explain how they work so you can kind of check it out and see, does this make sense for Calaveras? Planning, I mean, you're not going to go anywhere if you don't have a plan. So that's your economic development strategic plan. That's the SEDs, the Community Economic Development Strategy. SEDs are especially important because to get federal funding from the Economic Development Administration, you need a current SEDs. So sometimes, I mean, I guess it's a little of the carrot-stick situation. To get that federal money, you do need to have your plan in place. And so you might as well take advantage of that. Don't just do a really quick, whatever works, let's not think about it. Use that as an opportunity to outreach with your community, find out what their needs are, find out what they want to have their community look like in the next 10, 15, 20 years. Also, a huge thing that's happening in rural communities, this isn't going to be surprising, recovery and resiliency planning. So much like most communities throughout the nation, different impacts, whether it's a natural disaster or an economic disaster, like the pandemic, it's not a hurricane, but it certainly had an impact on our economy. Wildfires, all these different things, earthquakes in some areas. If you have a plan to be a resilient community, that makes your recovery that much easier. It won't be simple, but having a plan, building in that resiliency, and say you do have an impact, say you have a wildfire. When you're doing the recovery work for that, don't build it to what it was before the fire. Build it to what it needs to be in the future. So use that opportunity, if you do get disaster funding, to build what you want to see, not what you had. And then take advantage of available resources. I mean, everyone, I'm sure Kathy does not appreciate me saying that because she's probably filling out grant applications left and right. But there are, excuse me, there are programs at the federal and state level that can provide funding, but also there are programs that CALEd, next slide, has available. And we have some of them here, but all of these are available on our website. So if you want to look deeper at these things, you can check the website. This is our Tax Increment Financing Guidebook. That's the second edition, because in recent years, we've had state legislation that has tweaked some of the requirements and the rules. This is a soup to nuts. How, what is a tax increment financing district? How do you create one? I thought it was engaging. It might be boring and help you get to sleep at night. Either way, you have copies, you can check it out and see if this might be a good fit for Calaveras. This is in reference to our Economic Development Recovery and Resiliency Guidebook. This is the exact summary, but if your interest is piqued by this document, then you can dig into the full playbook that is on our website. Also, we reference the California Rural Infrastructure Guidebook. This looks at all of the different financing resources that are available for infrastructure. We published that, I want to say in 2018, so it's been a minute, but a lot of those resources are evergreen. So you can check out that guidebook. And then lastly, the project development and finance, that is a new division that we just started that is focused on real estate development and site development and the finance aspect of that in the community. So if that is something that is interesting to Calaveras County, that is a group that you can join as CALEd members and get involved in that and look at, well, what does the detail work of getting this parcel developed look like? And I know we are wildly over time, so Kathy, if we can hand it off to you or if you want us to do questions or wait till the end?
Chair, how do you feel? Do you want to do questions now or wait to the end?
You guys do your presentation.
Yes.
We can read the end of your presentation.
Okay, I'm going to go very quickly. I know. Something I want to mention, thank you both of you so much, so much information. You're doing a tax increment financing, you're doing a project development finance seminar in January, correct?
Yes, the 24th of January in Sacramento.
Right. So I'm hoping to attend that and would obviously love any of you to join as well, because I think there's going to be a lot of information. All right. So now I'm going to pull up my presentation, or Stacy's going to help me pull up my presentation. And I'm going to go really quick. There was a lot of information and I appreciate your time and things today, so.
We'll give you five minutes.
Okay.
I know she has the meat.
Well, and that's what I'm going to be providing, is kind of what have I been doing for the last year? I work with a lot of you, each of you, on the different things that I do in your district, in the county, in the five-county region, and so I kind of want to share just some high-level stuff. And also ask, I will be coming back for more direction on how we're going to implement our SEDs, which just went to EDA yesterday. Finalized yesterday. Thank you, Supervisor Stopper. So, hey, it's been a work in progress, but it's a huge, important thing that's happened for Calaveras County is getting that SEDs over the finish line. So I'm not going to belabor my mission. I think you guys pretty much know what my mission is. It's primarily to help and work with our business community, with our community associations, with our tourism, with our chamber, with our various organizations throughout the county, and to really keep our dollars local. So what is economic development? I think you've got that now. So let's talk about goals, and that's really what I want to focus. My 22, 23 goals and kind of what was accomplished last year or this year. I worked with over 60 businesses with a wide range of assistance, including technical and permitting assistance, developing resources. Disaster recovery, yes. My first two months of this year was disaster recovery, disaster response, and working our disaster recovery centers and working on grant funding and loans and programs. Multi-agency response team meetings, I work with our land use department heads, our planning department, our building official, our public works director. Sometimes we'll have a business come in and they're trying to figure out what they need to do or how to fix something or change something. And so I help lead those discussions so that we have a roundtable discussion, and all the questions can get answered at once. It's not, oh, I forgot about this or I needed this, I didn't know about that. I'm working with developers right now, four of them, because one of the things we all know is housing is a major issue. We need workforce housing. We need all types of housing. Worked, I'm working 12 grants, yeah. I'm working on 12 grants, 47 million. Phew, that's quite a bit. It's not all for Calaveras, so I'm working on that next year. New business markets, looking at biomass is a big thing that's happening, a food meat processing facility, clean tech manufacturing, and some others. I can't see the last one, but that's okay. Oh, the business-friendly checklist, yes. That's an attachment in your packet. It was a fun project that I did with RGS to find out, is Calaveras business-friendly? And overall, we did very, very well. There are some areas that we need improvement, primarily in permitting and streamlining. So business assistance on the direct numbers, 10 businesses and 20 individuals during the storm damage and recovery process this year from the winter storms. We did site visits, I did site visits with FEMA and SBA. We helped the disaster, I helped with the disaster reporting website setup, played PIO, and I'm sure you got tired of all my emails, and I do a lot of outreach when I can. Business services, provided 14 new businesses with startup resources, permitting, licensing, workforce, funding through SBA, SBDC, assisted 18 existing businesses with compliance assistance for growth and expansion. Hosted five multi-county meetings with business and county departments for two hotel developments, one in San Andreas, which we all know, and one potentially in Murphy's. Business assistance. The website was very popular. I do keep my website very fresh, I try anyways, as well as my social media. The top visited sites are starting a business and funding and resources. Lot of activity on Facebook page, 832 followers. I've only had the Facebook page about three years. So 9,500 posts, I had post-interactions, which is people that followed or clicked on more information. I'm averaging about 14 posts a month, which I really want to double. So here we are, the SEDs. It's going to EDA for approval. We will have a new EDA liaison or representative for our region. Melinda Mattson has retired. Excuse me. And the new gentleman is Richard. Do you remember his last name? Yeah. So I'm hoping to have a conversation with him. I don't know if he'll be at the CALEd conference, but that would be a great thing, because at the conferences, it's a great time to really meet these people that are going to help provide funding and put a face to the name and look at our community. Other goals are on the SEDs, there was four major identified areas. I'll go into more information on that in the future. Trying to keep this short. So there's housing. I work very closely on the housing partnership with our developers, with our Health and Human Services Agency, with our planning director. It's part of our housing element. Working with developers, looking at 75 units right now in Valley Springs, San Andreas, and Copperopolis. Participated in the housing partnership, as I mentioned, evaluated other housing opportunities, and looking at grants to incentivize development. I know that there's CDBG out there that's, we're looking at trying to figure out, how can we take that and make that work for infrastructure, for housing? for housing, all types of housing. Again, it's not just one type, it's all types. Partnerships, I think you pretty much know all these CCWD quarterly utility meetings, working with the Central Sierra Economic Development District, model of job training. Again, these are all components of building that puzzle of collaboration and partnerships. There's a new quarterly county and city meeting that CEO Hitchcock and city manager Rebecca Callen will be doing, which is great, another way to partner with our city. We have monthly department head, land use department heads. You can see that there's a whole bunch here, and I'm trying to keep it short. I don't think there's any surprises. Golden State Connect. As you know, I'm working very strongly in the broadband area for FFA grants as well as our later grants, bead funding, and all the various channels that are coming through. The SURF funding, which is now the California Jobs Act, they changed it from the Community Economic Resilience Fund, which will mean a lot of funding potentially for Calaveras County in the future. We are still in the planning phase, along with the catalyst funding, which is about $9 million for our region. Looking at sustainable recreation, forest economy, clean health, or clean environment, clean energy, sustainable agriculture, community healthcare. Those are the top, top industries. Prop 68 grant, I'm happy to report that we're closing out two of those grants. One for Feeny Park and one for Alex Quinones Park. But always looking for more funding through California Parks and other community resiliency opportunities. Work closely with the Parks and Recreation Commission, working on our Parks Master Plan with administration. We've got FAA funding that we're working on. Unfortunately, we did not get the $500,000 for solar at the airport. I was very sad, but I'm going to keep trying. We've got capital improvement projects at the airport that we're going to be pushing out for a year to two because of funding. Broadband, I touched on, Community Development Block Grant, looking at a great project opportunity right now. And I still get my PG&E funding. So the top three special projects I'm working on right now, I'm looking for a $3.5 million financing gap for the Willseyville biomass facility and Phoenix Energy. Looking to cite a regional meat processing facility either in Toolumi County or Calaveras. And Supervisor Falendorf, thank you for supporting that and being part of that. And then increasing our hotels. So looking at two mid-scale to upscale hotels, again, one in San Andreas and one potentially in Murphy's. So online community survey, I'm just going to touch quickly because it's still rolling. I was thinking I would have all the data by now and have it all compiled. I'm going to come back to the board with that information. I've got about 45 or 50 respondents, a lot of information. All the communities and districts are represented, businesses are filling them out. They're also available in paper form. I will mail them out. Actually, I was talking to someone, I might actually just start walking around with them in our communities. And they're also available at the libraries, and it's online on the county homepage. So I touched on the business friendly checklist. We've got some places that we can work on, and we're going to work on them. Extras, these are just extras. I love, I love our community, I love Calaveras, I like to work with our special groups, our community organizations, whether it's a parade or lumberjack days or community open houses. Those are, there's a lot that's been going on, a lot of our community is pulling together, especially in San Andreas. We're seeing that it's a local grassroots effort. Moke Hill's done it, Murphy's has done it, and Copperopolis as well. So I help wherever I can. So going forward to goals, there's a lot here. The biggest thing for me is going to be developing and implementing the SEDs. And looking at attraction plan, a marketing plan, working with the chamber, looking forward to promoting and really focusing on those areas that are of most importance to you. Okay. Any questions and comments?
Thank you, thank you for bringing up the SEDs. We finished up yesterday through the Central Sierra Economic Development District. This opens us up with the, and everything else to, I don't want to say a bundle, to receive funds through our strategic plan. And yes, Melinda Mattson's on the way out. I am optimistic about the new gentleman from Washington, although, you know, the West Coast is represented in a large area, and he is from Washington, so hopefully he can get his eyes personally on Calaveras County somewhere along the way. Housing, key issue throughout the state, much less we are filling it here. Infrastructure for that housing, water, sewer, everything else, that's one of our biggest hurdles. We can have people with money develop, but if you don't have the infrastructure in place, those costs can go through the roof to the point where it doesn't pencil out. So I'll keep it short and sweet to that.
Any other board comments? Seeing none, open up to public, public comments. Mr. Staub.
Good morning.
Hello, how are you doing today? First off, I want to thank you for all your hard work. I, I'm afraid a lot of it was lost on me, but because I'm old. I'm just here to pick up a cake, so I stopped in to say hello and wish you happy holidays in the spirit of the agenda item. Take care.
Any other public comments on this item? Mr. Gold, your morning.
Chair Toffanelli, Honorable Board, want to thank you guys very much for that presentation. I, as a serial entrepreneur in this county, all small businesses, I wasn't able to be here right away, but I did listen in on Calaveras Community TV. Thanks, Susan. What really stuck to me, and I think we can all agree on, is retention. Investing in businesses that have made investments in this community. And it's really comforting, it's empowering to hear that. And I think that it's something that we as a community are being tight knit, you know, it's something we can really work on. And I don't want to conflict this agenda item with number 35, but just keep that thought in mind, we're going to talk about that later. Thanks, guys, appreciate it, thank you.
Any other public comments in the room? Seeing none, are there any online?
There are no online public comments.
No online public comments. Well, I'll bring it back to the board, is there any other, other comments from the board, from the comments?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation, thank you. And we will take, we'll take a five-minute break. Left staff. Hubner is here to give us the presentation.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, Members of the Board, Denise Hubner, Deputy CAO. I'm bringing this item forward today due to the concerns the board expressed regarding the impact of the solid waste fee increase on low-income residents. Administration worked with HHSA to determine funding options. It was determined that HHSA did not have funding eligible for this use. At final budget, a transfer was included from the Integrated Waste Management CIP payback amount to cover the cost. The program eligibility requirements are, do you want to pull up the flyer, Stacy? Applicants need to submit a completed application and proof of payment. It must be their primary residence. They need to meet income eligibility requirements, which are in line with DHCS medical eligibility limits. The program timeline is, it's our intention to run the program from January 1st, 2024, through June 14th, 2024. This is to ensure that we can issue refunds and cover all expenses prior to the close of the fiscal year. If approved, admin will administer the program and the flyer and application will be posted to the IWM website, the Administrative Office website, and be handed out in HHSA program packets. Does the board have any questions?
City board questions? Seeing none, open to public, is there any public comments on this item? Questions, comments? Seeing none in the room, is there any online?
There are no online questions, my hands raised.
All right, then I will bring it back to the board and open for a motion on item number 30.
Some move, Mr. Chair, and thank you for bringing this up when we're going through everything. It's not my idea.
And thank you Denise. So we have a motion by Supervisor Stoppard.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Hubner, all in favor?
Aye.
None, I mean, excuse me, any no's? Passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Train of thought there for a minute. Okay, item number 31, we will move on to, it said action item from the Administrative Office is approved noticing for Title III Funding Proposal from the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of 2000 in the amount of $114,000, $114,940.94. End again the 45-day comment period. Marcos, you're up.
All right, good morning, Honorable Chair, Members of the Board, Marcos Munoz, Assistant CAO. Today I am here seeking approval from the board for noticing of the Title III funding proposals. If approved today, it will open up the 45-day comment period, which will close at 4:00 PM on January 26th. So Secure Rural Schools Title III Funding, or SRS Funding, is funding that can only be used for specific purposes. Those purposes include firewise community programs, reimbursement for emergency services on federal land, the development of a countywide wildfire protection plan, and equipment purchases related to emergency services, and some broadband telecommunications services. So currently, the county has $114,940.4 available. So we posted and asked for project submittals, and we received two. Those projects are, one, from the sheriff's office at the amount of $30,000. This is to supplement the purchase of capital equipment for a search and rescue vehicle. And then second, we received a proposal from the Fire Safe Council in the amount of $60,000 to provide supplemental funding for a project manager. In addition to those two proposals, admin is also recommending that the remaining balance from the 114, the remaining balance of just under $25,000, be set aside to the sheriff's office to offset the overtime cost incurred during the recent search and rescue efforts in the area of the Lakemont subdivision that surrounds the Arnold Rim Trail. So those three projects together would total the total amount that we have of funding available. So if approved today, we would bring back the comments along with the proposals for either the board to approve or deny after the close of the comment period on January 26th.
45-day comment period begins today once we approve this?
Correct, yes.
Do you have any board comments, Supervisor Girmending?
Good question, I'm not opposed to any of this. So what is the, have we gotten the final bill for that search and rescue yet? I know this 25 is a, is a nice start, but.
We do not have the final bill at this time. We are not aware of what the total costs are going to be.
Got a spitball number out there?
I do not, I do not.
Smart man. Thank you, Marcos.
Any other board comments? Seeing none, open to public, is there public comments on this item? Seeing none in the room, is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
We have no online comments, I'll bring it back to the board and open for a motion.
Some moved.
A motion by Supervisor Stoppard.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Huberty, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, passes 5-0. We'll move on to item number 32, this is informational item from Public Health Services. This received a presentation from Calaveras County Health and Human Services, Public Health Division, reporting the results of the 2023 Calaveras Community Health Assessments. Colleen.
Hi.
Hi, here's a presentation.
Hi too, thank you. I think, because I was actually quite loud. So I'm Colleen Rodriguez, and I'm the Deputy Director of Calaveras Public Health.
Hello, my name is Wakas Hanafi, I'm a health education specialist at Public Health.
Hey, grand health education program.
And we just want to thank you for the opportunity for us to share some of the 2023 Calaveras Health Assessment results with you today. We've brought some copies of the executive summary, you all have a copy. But there's also some copies on the podium, if anybody in the audience wants to see one, they're pretty fancy. And if you want to follow along, we encourage you to do so. Thank you. You're welcome. There we go, which button do I push? Okay, no, it's unstuck, okay, perfect. So today we'll be discussing a little bit about the Calaveras County Public Health Division. We will also be talking about why it's so important to collect local data versus just accepting the data that we get from the state. We're also going to talk about how data is actually analyzed and why that is also an important factor. We're going to talk about a little bit of a summary of the results that we found. And then we're also going to talk about what our next steps are because it's kind of an exciting time. If you're interested in data, which I know all of you are. So at Calaveras County Public Health, our mission is to improve the health and well-being of everyone in Calaveras County. This is something we strive for every day and in every approach that we take with our community. Our organizational values were established by our dynamic team through a really extensive strategic planning process that we went through. And those values include community engagement, social responsibility, excellence, and quality improvement, and health equity. And I'm now going to pass it on to Wakas, who will discuss the importance of data collection.
All right, thank you, Colleen. So in reviewing existing health data for the county, we found a significant gap. Most available statistics are aggregated across Calaveras and surrounding counties. When data is aggregated like this, typically a small number of Calaveras residents out of a larger multi-county pool are surveyed, and then statistical modeling techniques are used to generalize and estimate statistics about our county. This creates a blind spot on the precise local health needs and issues facing Calaveras residents, which makes it difficult to track progress and target interventions and services. Calaveras may be similar in some ways to Toolumi or Amador, but Calaveras is Calaveras. This county has its own identity and its own unique challenges. And if we want to truly understand our community's health and needs, we must gather data directly from and focused on our county residents. Next slide. And that's exactly why it was so important to conduct our own community health assessment, which was a great opportunity to ensure that voices from Calaveras aren't diluted or drowned out by the process of which was a great opportunity to ensure that voices from Calaveras aren't diluted or drowned out by the process of data aggregation. We started by interviewing nineteen key informants, people working directly with the community. Then we invited community members from across the county for in-depth focus group discussions, giving them a chance to share their views. From these interviews, we identified six overarching themes to help develop a countywide questionnaire-based survey. These themes were health behaviors, health and well-being, community priorities, access to care, chronic disease burden, and mental health needs. Together, these complementary qualitative and quantitative data sources uncover the lived experiences and health priorities directly from nearly six hundred community members. Next slide. The insights provide a data-driven foundation to identify our biggest health challenges as well as our strengths and assets. For instance, tobacco use, prescription drug misuse, and binge drinking were identified as unhealthy behaviors where improvement opportunities exist. Next slide. Nevertheless, eighty-eight percent of survey respondents rate their health and well-being as good to excellent. Next slide. And now I'll pass it off to Haley Graham for, to speak further about our findings.
Thank you, Wakas. So in addition to the two categories that Wakas just mentioned, community priority are also announced as community needs or concern that the community came up as an overarching theme. This was broken down into three subthemes, including affordable housing, the need for medical providers, and the need for additional mental health support. And so with that, we added some additional context here from our focus groups. We had one Murphy participant also say that our home and homeowner's insurance was canceled and then having to go to the California Fair Plan. It's all very stressful. So this is just one scenario, but this is a really good example of how these stressors can kind of impact health. And so we look at some of these instances that we're all used to living in this community. But within this survey, we were able to identify how these connected with how people dealt with their day-to-day health. In addition to community priority, we also saw that an overarching category was access to care or barriers to actually accessing care. So sixty-five percent of our survey respondents stated that they had difficulty accessing a healthcare provider for various reasons. We also had one out of four, or twenty-five percent of our respondents state that that cost was a barrier to accessing healthcare, meaning that a lot of people would not seek that healthcare solely because of the price of it. We also had one senior days participant mention how we talk about having all of this healthcare, but if you don't have transportation, you also have no healthcare. And so you can kind of see how a lot of these different fields and different situations kind of compound onto an individual and can impact the way that they're able to access health. Next slide, please. And so our fifth overarching category here was the rate of chronic conditions. We were able to identify some self-reported chronic conditions that came over the thematically, over the three methods of survey, which included mental health diagnoses at twenty-five percent for respondents, cardiovascular diagnoses at fifteen percent for some of our respondents, and then nine percent of our respondents reported a respiratory disease diagnosis. Next slide, please. So last but not least, mental health needs was a pretty big overarching category throughout all three survey methods again. We saw that barriers to accessing mental health needs became one of the overarching themes. So provider shortages, cost of care, and transportation, again, for a lot of reasons that people did not seek care or did not receive care. A lot of these things we are very already familiar with, but this kind of just gave us data to show and support seeking additional measures to address a lot of these challenges people have within their community. And so with that, next slide, please. We'd like to propose kind of utilizing this data for action. So we're hoping to announce or release our summary and community health assessment report in January of two thousand and twenty-four. This will give us greater detail or the public greater detail as to what information the community reported within the surveys, the key informant interviews, and the focus groups. With that, though, we want to use this health assessment to drive some change. And so we will be starting the Calaveras Community Health Improvement Partnership. This partnership will be made up of a intersectoral partnership with a network of people from different representations, from different organizations, different parts of the community. We're hoping to include labor, education, economic development, healthcare, public safety, and so much more. Because a lot of this is more than us. This is more than just health in general, but the way that people navigate care within our community. And so this partnership will also be responsible for developing a community health improvement plan. This will hopefully hold this partnership accountable for implementing and addressing the needs that were assessed for the community health assessment. And so, Colleen will show on the last slide, but if anyone is interested in getting involved in this process, we're asking everyone to reach out. We'll have contact information at the end of this slide to reach out to us at Public Health. And we're hoping to do a launch in January or February of next year. With that, thank you. Next slide.
Thanks, Wakas and Haley. And also thanks, some of the public health team are in here today, and a big thanks to the public health team. You can imagine what a huge undertaking this is. Some local health jurisdictions hire out to do this. We felt that it was really important that our team, as community members, do this activity. So we're really proud of, of what we did. In addition to this first-ever comprehensive community health assessment, we also completed the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-five strategic plan, which you can see here. The strategic plan was provided as an opportunity for our community and for our team to really understand what our focus is on. And the strategic plan and the health assessment kind of go hand in hand, as you'll see when you read through this. It is also available on our website, as is the executive summary. Both of those are also available on our website. But included in the strategic plan is this graphic, this circular graphic that's provided up there, which talks about our programs and services. It actually, our programs and services are constantly changing because they change depending on what the community need is. And so some of there's things to add in here in addition to what's up there. But I think in looking at this graphic, and there's a lot of words up there, the most important thing to really focus on is that our community is at the center of it. Calaveras County is at the center of all that we do and continues to be so as we, we move forward and offer more diverse programs and services to our community. So we want to make sure that everyone knows that Calaveras County Public Health is the county, it's the community's public health. So we just really appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you. As Haley mentioned, the community health assessment in its entirety, once all that data is analyzed, will be available on the website. It will be available to anyone and everyone who wants to see it. We really encourage everyone to visit our website at calaveraspublichealth.com. If you have any questions, whether you're a board member, whether you're a community member, someone in the audience, we really encourage you to call us at seven five four six four six oh. Information's up here. We encourage you to send Haley or I an email. We encourage you to even swing by the office for a visit because we're happy to engage and to talk with our community about things that are going on. And also, as Haley had mentioned, we, it is crucial that we have community engagement in this process as we move forward with the Community Health Improvement Plan. So if anyone is interested, please reach out to us and let us know, and we'll get you connected. And for now, we just thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you today and look forward to sharing more as we find more information out. So, thank you.
Supervisor Germini?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, Public Health, Ms. Rodriguez, for your presentation today. I want to compliment you all on completing this report and gathering the data from our local. As you guys are all aware, as I say often, what's measured is done. And so having the statistics to back up what we're doing is important. There, and I really want to compliment you on rebuilding the team. I mean, we're all going to carry the scars of COVID for a very long time, and there's plenty of veterans in this room of that battle. And so it's nice to see that we're able to reset and, and move forward because I know we've got everything from food security to increased S T D levels in our community, dental hygiene programs, all the things that need to keep our community healthy. You guys are taking on. Are there other issues that you're seeing pop up that might be immediate threats or priorities in our community that we need to prepare for as a board?
Well, I, I'm going to pass it on to the primary data analyzer right now, Wakas, who can also talk a little bit about some of the things that he may have found too. But one of the things that is an issue or is a challenge for us is the concept of social isolation. It is something that with our community is an older, we, a third of our community is sixty and over. But it's not just, doesn't just affect younger people. It affects everyone. And what the surgeon general, if you are interested, I can definitely send you the report. The surgeon general put together an entire report on the dangers and the harm of social isolation, and we're actually finding that there's physical harms and physical effects that are happening. And you had mentioned, thank you for the acknowledgement of, of the rebuild of our team. It's, it's, it's been amazing in, in being a part of that. But one of the things that COVID really did leave all of us with was a disruption in our, in our connections with others. And that, and reestablishing those connections is proving to be challenging for many folks. Everyone from young people all the way up to our elders. So that is something that we all can take a moment and try to reconnect with folks that maybe we hadn't connected with or since COVID started. But that is something that our community in particular, because of the actual distances and because of the different things that happened during COVID that made us a little bit more isolated. That is something that we are currently working on. HHSA has a grant, received a grant to address, to utilize technology in social isolation within our elder population. So that's something that the agency is also working on, and we are also working on. We've just started in response to, to our community health assessment, but also in response to the community responses that we've received. We've actually also just started a healthy aging program to also talk about what that could look like. So that's a couple of things, but there's a lot of, a lot of emerging issues. But the flip of that is, I also just want to say, we also have a lot of strengths in this community and, and we can take that, those challenges that we have and really turn them into a strength as well.
One of your statistics had a pretty significant impact on mental health.
Correct.
Imagine social, and social isolation as a major factor in that. Do you think it's increasing? Or is this just because we're finally collecting good data?
I wouldn't want to speculate because I don't, I don't have the data in front of me, but my gut from the information, but I guess I will. My gut from the impact that COVID had in doing, reading and doing the research that we've all done, I think it's a combination, but we're definitely seeing, the data is indicating on kind of a country, a national level that mental health needs are rising. Post-COVID, it could be that COVID was the thing that kind of pushed people kind of over or, or is encouraging them to seek that treatment. But it is a very real challenge that we have in this community, and access is a very real challenge that we have. And it was illustrated in the executive summary. Access doesn't just mean the fact that we have, for every one mental health provider, I think we have, you know, five hundred people that need that person. But it's also about transportation. It's also about each of us saying it's okay to seek that treatment. It's a combination of things, but what we in public health are working on, so behavioral health is a part of our agency, and so it's great. We're able to partner with them quite a bit. And we're focusing a lot on our youth engagement because we know that one of the perfect protective factors for youth is engagement. And if we have youth that are engaged, we're hoping that we will be able to help them access mental health, you know, activities and facilities and resources, but it will also be a preventative portion as well.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your work.
Supervisor Huberty, your light time?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Germini, for asking that question. Social, social isolation is a huge factor with my constituents and its physical barriers. Snow. Last year, we had a lot of elderly people that were, were housebound for a very long period of time. I'd love to be able to talk to you about how to combat that, especially as it's, obviously, our snow season is just about to start. I also wanted to thank Corey Allen for, for taking me away from the day and showing me all the amazing work that you guys do and the magnitude of what you do. So thank you.
I would be happy absolutely instantly. I think that there are so many options within our agency and things that are being done that could really help folks who are snowed in be able to feel less.
I also have to say really quickly that there are some elderly people that are amazing on their own.
Oh, yeah.
And I would love to study them to figure out what they do to, I mean, you know, I have one constituent in particular who's, you know, can I help you with the firewood? I got all the firewood I need. I was like, do you need any food? I got all the food I need. I mean, they're really incredible individuals and, yeah, we need to capture them. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
I have one.
Supervisor Polander?
And you may not know the answer because it just recently happened, but the impact of the current Blue Cross contract with providing services to our communities. So with that not being renewed on the other side of the river and across California, how are we going to support those that are not going to be able to get their services with their health insurance?
I think I would need to learn more about the specific things that you're talking about. So one thing that I think that the board may want, if you don't know, I know that we in the agency are actively working on, is managed Medi-Cal programs right now are doing, there's a big push from the Department of Healthcare Services called CALAME. And so there is a lot of partnering that's going on to ensure that a lot of people who aren't on managed Medi-Cal programs are getting all of the services that they need. But outside of that, I think we would need to have a discussion about specifics.
Okay, that seems, it's going to be impacting millions of people, especially in the state of California, and where they're going to go to get some of these services if there's insurance, you know, no longer covering the things that they need. The other, just could transportation keep coming up? And I know a lot of people kind of go out of the county, but do you want to talk about it?
No.
Okay. Is we do have dialer ride in this county, and I don't know how many of your, the individuals that you show know about that, where they can get direct delivery to their providers. And so that is an option that we have. I think, again, I need to look outside of the county line boundaries, but at least within the county bound, the Calaveras twenty to the forty days have dialer rides and can pre-schedule and advantage well.
And I appreciate that. We are huge advocates of the dialer ride program within the county. The other thing, since the community is listening to this, anybody who has Medi-Cal, the managed Medi-Cal programs are also required to provide transportation to folks for medically deemed necessary transportation. So if anybody, and we are constantly singing this song, but anybody who has Medi-Cal just needs to flip their card over, call that number, and they, they do need to arrange it a couple of days ahead of time. But we really encourage folks to do that as well because transportation is a major issue for folks. A lot of it is tied to whether families want to pay for gas or whether they want to get food for their families. And, and so there are difficult choices that are being made, but we, we do advocate. So thank you. Thank you for that.
I, I just have a couple of questions myself. Going back to your focus groups, and you have one in each district. Can you tell me how many people participated in those groups? Was it a large group? Was it like four or five? Was it?
It varied. It varied quite a bit by kind of district, and we shook all the bushes we could. We really tried to get people out, you know, and, and so it, it depended. I feel like was Valley Springs. was Valley Springs our biggest one?
You don't wanna focus group to be more bigger than eight anyway.
Right.
Discussion starts to ground out, so we did between two and eight. I think.
Oh, Murphy's was the bigger.
Yeah, I, I don't think community, each one, but just the overall, because I think what you based all your information on was these groups and the information you're gonna, so possibility um, if you're gonna concentrate in maybe the most eight, maybe you could do more than just one group. So you get a wide band of, of what's going on in the community.
So.
Just, you know, eight people out of one district or, or even, you know, um, less than that. So, so we have a true look at what's actually going on. I'm not saying that you don't hear, but obviously if you had more than one meeting and got more than one group together, it, it would give you a little bit more information possible.
And just so that, it, thank you for that point, Supervisor Topenelli. Um, the focus groups were the thing that informed what our sixty-two question survey was giving. So um, and the themes that we found in the five districts were all very similar. Um, and so it was the, the big lift, if you will, was um the sixty-two question survey that we put out and got almost sixty, six hundred respondents, which um is pretty good.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
It's not statistically, you know, significant, we were almost there, but we didn't quite make it. But so the process was that we took, we did the key informant interviews with the nineteen people that were within the community. And then that helped inform what the focus group questions would be, based on what those folks um gave us. And then what the focus group outcome was, was based, what the questions were based on. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And without, other than the public comments, is there any public comments on this item? Seeing none in the room? Is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
All right, well, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there any final questions by the board, comments? Not, it was informational. Thank you, Pauline.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And we'll give it a minute. Gabriel, do you need uh time to set up? I'm, I'm gonna stand right here. Ready on your?
Ready.
All right. Next item on the agenda, number thirty-three is conduct a public hearing, adopt a sequoia negative declaration and adopt a resolution approving a general plan amendment twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine zero three-nine from commercial to residential medium density, RMD for Doreen and Steve Hummerson?
Hummerson.
Okay, and I will at this time open the public hearing.
Thank you.
You're up.
Thank you, Chacha Finelli, members of the board, uh CEO and uh County Council. Uh, this item has already been to the planning commission. Uh, it is a request for a general plan amendment. Uh, the following item is an adjunct item that's also going to be requesting for a zone change. So when you think about this general plan amendment, think about the other item to follow. Uh, without much to do, um, uh, planner Catherine Stephanie has provided, uh, is gonna provide us with a um PowerPoint presentation. And if you have any follow-up questions, I'll be here to answer them for you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Catherine Stephanie. I'm a planner too with the Calveras County Planning Department, and this presentation is going to be for both items thirty-three and thirty-four. So I will be presenting planning projects numbered.
Can you hold up one second?
Yes.
Before you. Since we have two items on the agenda and they're both public hearings, can we combine the public hearings like we're trying to do here?
I would think each one would have to be introduced separately, but I think we can do the presentation to cover, but County Council can.
Yeah, I mean, the presentation, it's fine to do the presentation, but then we'll wanna do a public hearing for each.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I will be presenting planning projects number two thousand twenty-two dash zero three nine and two thousand twenty-two dash zero four zero, a general plan amendment and zoning amendment for Doreen and Steve Hummerson. The subject parcel highlighted in red on this map up on the screen is located at seventy-three Mitchler Avenue in Murphy's. It's approximately two hundred and fifty feet east of Highway four. The project proposes to amend the general plan use designation of assessor parcel number zero six eight dash zero two zero dash zero six five, a zero point three one acre parcel from commercial to residential medium density. And also proposes to amend the zoning of the parcel from professional offices to multiple family residential to make the existing single-family residence on site a conforming use. The subject parcel is currently zoned professional offices, has a commercial land use designation and has the aforementioned single-family residence, which is served by public water and public wastewater services. Um, as a note, these boundary lines are slightly um off, they are approximate. So county records, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, county records show that the house was constructed in nineteen eighty-six and that at the time the parcel was zoned multiple family residential. Sometime after the construction of the house, the zoning was changed to professional offices and standalone single-family residences aren't permitted in the um professional offices zone without a conditional use permit. However, uh because the zoning was changed after the house was constructed, there is no conditional use permit and the use is deemed non-conforming. If the parcel were to be rezoned to multiple family residential, the single-family residence would be um permitted in the new zone. And additionally, the owners would be able to enlarge, extend and reconstruct the house in the same manner as other homeowners in the area without needing discretionary approval from the planning commission as is required for non-conforming uses and structures. This figure shows the subject parcel with the proposed residential medium density land use designation, which identifies land for a mix of residential uses, including single-family residences in areas with both public water and public wastewater services available. This designation has a minimum density requirement of six dwelling units per acre for parcels with public water and wastewater services available and a maximum density of twelve units per acre. Compatible zones include single-family, two-home and multiple-family residential, recreation and public service. So the, the current professional offices zone is not compatible with the designation, the proposed designation, and therefore the zoning also needs to be amended. The proposed zoning is multiple-family residential, again shown here is the proposal, um, which is intended to provide lands for apartments, condominiums, townhomes and other high-density land uses. It's designated to be loc-, uh, to be located where commercial services, recreation facilities and public services are local, located within a reasonable distance. A single-family residence is a permitted use in the R-three zone. And although an amendment to the R-three zone would allow the potential development of three multifamily residential units, there's no development proposed at this, at this time. The applicant intends to keep the existing single-family residence on site. Um, so the proposed zoning is consistent with the proposed residential medium density land use designation. There are a mix of surrounding land uses in the area, including commercial, residential and public service uses. So to the north and the west, and west of the subject parcel are parcels zoned professional offices, local commercial and general commercial, including the Faith Lutheran Church, a gas station, the Sierra Hills Market and the Murphy's Inn Hotel. Across Highway four to the southwest are two parcels zoned public service, which house the Murphy's Fire Protection District Station. And then to the east and south are both single-family residence and, single-family residential and multiple-family residential parcels developed with a mix of single-family residences, the Mur-, uh, the Murphy's Diggins Mobile Home Park and duplexes and fourplexes. The county general plan designation pattern closely follows the zoning. Um, the general plan designates the land to the commercial properties commercially and, and as community center land use designations. And then the residentially zoned parcels are uh designated residential low-density wind zone, single-family residential and residential medium-density wind zone, multifamily residential. The application was routed for thirty days and during that period, the Environmental Management Agency commented that proper waste disposal, potable water and sewer, sewer services be secured and active. No other comments were received. Um, during the routing of the environmental document, a letter was received from the neighboring property owner stating that they believe that the single-family residential zone would be um better than the multifamily residential zone. And then during, um, after the Board of Supervisors notice of public hearing was sent, a letter was received from the Buena Vista Rancheria of Milwaukee Indians. Um, they had no comment on the project. A single initial study was completed for both requested actions and it analyzed project-related impacts to the environment and a negative declaration was prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, finding less than significant project-related impacts. The document was available for public review from July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three until August tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and three letters were received from the California Department of Transportation, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board and the aforementioned neighboring property owner. Um, the Caltrans and Water Quality Board letters were both standard response letters that didn't bring up any specific environmental concerns. And because no comments were cer-, were received regarding environmental impacts, staff believes um the findings of having less than significant impacts were substantiated. The proposed rezone to multiple-family residential could potentially allow the construction of three multifamily residential units, but as I said, no construction is proposed as part of this project. The parcel is within a designated area for special status species, um, which is a two mile, which is two miles in diameter and it covers the entirety of the Murphy's community area. If the subject parcel were to be developed fully under the proposed zone, the impact to any candidate, sensitive or special species status is anticipated to be less than significant because of the size of the parcel and existing development and landscaping on the subject parcel and uh due to the heavy development in the immediate surrounding area. The parcel isn't located in a designated critical habitat, is outside of any recorded flood zone and there are no known riparian habitats or wetlands on the subject parcel. At the November ninth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, the commission, which currently has a vacancy, voted three ayes with one commissioner abstaining to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve planning projects two thousand twenty-two dash zero three nine and two thousand twenty-two dash zero four zero as general plan amendment and zoning amendment. Um, there were no public comments at that hearing. In conclusion, staff finds that the proposed general plan amendment to residential medium density and zoning amendment to multiple-family residential are consistent with the general plan and compatible with surrounding uh land uses and zoning. The existing single-family residence is permitted by the proposed zone and meets the general plan density requirements. The proposed zone and land use designation are consistent with the current use of the property and the R-three zone is more appropriate due to the existing residence. Um, additionally, staff found that the project will have less than significant effects on the environment. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board comments?
My understanding is that this was purchased by the Lutheran Church and uses offices for the Lutheran Church and that they don't need it anymore and that's why it's been sold into it.
It was, my understanding is it was a home for, I believe, the pastor.
Right.
Uh, it was a residence for the pastor. So it's been used according to county records as a home since it was built in nineteen eighty-six.
Uh, it's Mitchler Avenue is a very sweet little neighborhood in the Murphy's area and I think this would be a benefit to the community.
Is there anybody here for the Hummersons? Are they here? You wish to speak? Is your time to speak here?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you again, Catherine. She has been absolutely fantastic and I appreciate your time today. Um, my name is Doreen Hummerson and my husband, Steve, and I purchased the property uh July fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two. Um, it, we weren't even aware that it was a commercial property, but we had hired Michelle Plotnick as a consultant, architect consultant, because we were completely gutting the house and re-, you know, reviving it. Um, the house was the pastor's house, so it's always been a resident. And she was the one who informed us that it was in these circumstances and it would be advised to, since it was a residence, we had every intention of keeping it as a residence, just improving what was already there. Um, that it would be beneficial long-term to have it zoned as residential because that's what we are using it for and plan to use it for. Um, my husband and I spent a whole year um of our time in using all local um vendors, you know, and contractors to help us. And the house is absolutely gorgeous. It's completely done inside, all done through the planning. Everything's been permanent. And we've also redone the landscaping to do more of a natural landscaping. So there is no intention of doing anything other than what we have done with it, but we would like to retain the original zoning um and go through that process now sooner than later. So that's the whole reason for this even happening.
Supervisor Stocker?
Just one quick question with the, it's a high density that you're going to?
Uh, yes, they're going to.
Minimum of six units per acre?
Per acre, yes.
And maximum twelve? It's a point three one acres?
Yeah.
Does that equate to uh two?
Uh, the maximum would be three residential units, so they could put in something like a three unit apartment.
Because it's well a point three three. Just wanna make sure the number, how I'm about to respond to that. It makes sense. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, you've done, you've done a beautiful job, defends everything that you've done.
Oh, you seen it?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Um, and also just so you know, I mean, up the street, there are properties that are multiple family.
Yeah, at the end of Mitchler, there are, I believe, three or four duplexes.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yes, Supervisor Paulander.
Um, I just have one question um on utility. Because it's going to multi-residential, um, was there any feedback from the local utility agency?
No, we notified both Union Public Dist-, Public Utility District and the Murphy's Sanitary District, and I didn't receive any comments from them.
Okay. I just wanna make sure, cause I noticed, um, unless this isn't for this, but I've been noticing that they've not accepted box on these um for land use development. Um, and it just makes me, I just wanna make sure we're not ignoring any input on that for um book up and capacity.
No, they, they, they were notified um of the initial routing, the sequoia document, um, the notice of public hearing for both the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You may be coming back up right now. Thank you very much for your presentation. All right, so Gabriel, do you have any more comments? Catherine, comments before I open the public?
Uh, 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 none at this particular time. Just to emphasize that we've already had a planning commission hearing on, on this item. Uh, I do not find any aspect of it to be controversial, but here we are. Thank you.
Okay. All right, public comments on this item? Anyone in the room? Seeing none? Is there any online? Okay, before I close the public hearing, uh, do you have anything else you'd like to add? No, you're done? Okay, Catherine, you're.
No, I'm done.
Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for conversation or motion. or motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Hubbard, second by Fallendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, passes five zero. We'll move on to item number thirty-four. This is an ordinance for planning. Conduct a public hearing, adopt a sequo negative declaration, and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN zero six eight dash zero two zero dash six five from professional offices, CP, to multiple-family residence R-three. For Doreen and Steve Hummerson, authorize summary publication and a brief property description and map of the reclassified property. I will open the public hearing.
Chair Tofanelli, members of the board, CEO and County Council. So uh, this item is the zoning change portion of the general plan amendment you just did a couple of minutes ago. And I don't think we need to do any kind of further presentation because the presentation provided covered both the general plan and the zone change. Um, now that we have a zone change, the uh, this item requests that the zoning of the property be changed to be consistent with the general plan. Thank you.
So these, board comments, questions? Supervisor Stocker, your light's on?
I like it.
Supervisor Hubbard, this is your district. Well, we have to open public comment. No, you have, okay. So the Hummerson, Doreen, do you have any comments on this item? It's your opportunity now to say anything if you do. As part of the public hearing, I have to, you have, you have up to, you have up to fifteen minutes to speak on it.
Thank you again, everybody, for your attention on this. It's um, we love Murphy's. We love being a part of this community. We love our neighbors. Um, we loved making this, um, you know, improving the um, the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, there was a house right across the street, nine hundred square feet. Um, and I'm sure because of, you know, everybody helping, you know, beautify their houses and improve the houses, they sold their house, nine hundred square feet, for more than we bought. You know, so hopefully that helps increase the value and, you know, brings um, more to the, to the neighborhood and to Murphy's, you know, to have it look nice. And so it is really important to us to have the zoning as a residential. And I think it's also important to the neighbors. We're not going to be building all these houses and it, it does keep it from being a commercial property as well. So thank you again and thank you, Catherine, and Merry Christmas. So, thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel, do you have any other thing you'd like? No? Okay, I'll open up public comment. Is there public comment on the side? Seeing none in the room? Is there any online? Okay, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board, and open for a motion?
I'd like to make a-
You look nervous over there. Do I have a motion by Supervisor Hubbard? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fallendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna open, go on to item number thirty-five. Item thirty-five is an action item from the Building Department. By a four-fifth vote, introduce and waive first reading of an uncodified ordinance reducing the cannabis cultivation tax rate specific, specified in section three point five six point zero five zero B-one dash three on a temporary basis as authorized by section three point five six zero seven zero. Authorized summary publication. Mr. Oliver.
Good morning, Chair members of the board. Doug Oliver, chief building official. Uh, first I'm gonna say uh, this is one of the harder things that I do as part of my job. I'm not uh, I'm not fully knowledgeable on tax, but I, I know what happens in this community and I, I know what's been happening in this industry. So my goal here is to make this quick, uh, show with you what we have in the community is happening, the positive effects, uh, show what my idea is, and then do what you tell me to do. So uh, we'll make it that quick. As your boards are aware, December thirteenth, twenty-two, the board approved an ordinance that temporarily reduced the cannabis cultivation square footage tax by sixty percent. Uh, this was in result, or this was the result of a significant reduction in the value of cannabis. And as I look at the numbers here, in two thousand twenty, the price was anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand dollars a pound. Uh, when this tax is originally approved, that price dropped by about fifty percent in twenty-one, down to four hundred, five hundred dollars a pound, and continued to drop further. Twenty-two, we hit a hundred and fifty dollars a pound, uh, to, up to in the higher end, three hundred dollars a pound. Uh, so your board did approve this uh, for the year of two thousand twenty-three, and we're bringing it back uh, as a, a second go to take a look at what's gonna happen in the next year, which we anticipate is a stabilization. This year, actually, it came up a bit. Uh, we're looking at a price per pound based on uh, what we, feedback we got from the community. We're looking at three hundred to four hundred and fifty dollars a pound. So it has come up a bit. However, uh, we can't speak to a stabilization of the market yet at all. Um, a stable, a, a fluctuation of fifty percent of the value uh, in any given year really doesn't speak at all of stabilization. So our hope here is to, to recommend a continuation of that sixty percent to see if the prices stabilize in California. There's still a lot of things going on in the industry. We're still waiting to see if the federal government is going to uh, move the classification of, of this product, which means if there's an opening up of uh, interstate commerce on this, it's gonna fluctuate the values again. Uh, as your board is aware, we have had significant tax changes in other counties in the last couple of years and some changes in the state as well. Um, I want to remind the board that there uh, the statewide tax shifted, the uh, it didn't eliminate the tax, it shifted it from the cultivators to the retail. That did not carry forward to the purchasers of this product. Instead, it drove the price down for the cultivator. So there was no realization of any savings by moving that tax. Um, I can say uh, from the implementation of this reduction, there's been a significant change in the collection of that tax locally. Prior to the sixty percent reduction, we had uh, floating around twenty-four permit holders that were in arrears, some of those being in arrears multiple uh, multiple quarters, up to three quarters behind. Shortly after you implemented this tax, the uh, the tax reduction, that is, we saw uh, the cultivators being able to catch up and pay all the taxes on a quarterly basis. Uh, last quarter, we had zero delinquencies after a month. This quarter, we only have six current delinquencies uh, with the deadline of tomorrow to pay. What we anticipate is that there will be once again, zero delinquencies. If, if these do not pay by tomorrow, we're only looking at a, a, a deficit of thirty-six thousand dollars as opposed to prior to uh, the reduction somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand in arrears. So we've, we've seen a significant difference with the increase of, of uh, the market price and the, the reduction in the taxation. We were seeing uh, some significant improvement. If there's any questions, I'm all ears.
Any board questions? Supervisor Stocker?
My light is off.
Your light has just been turned on.
Yeah, sir. Uh, you know, I, I, I appreciate the report, Doug. Uh, you know, for, for the most part, I see everything lining up with uh, the things that I, I've seen around the state. Um, another, another point here is, you know, uh, prior to this, like when we're bringing up economic development, that Bolger already brought up during comment earlier, you know, uh, prior to this, we're looking at delinquencies, possible loss of business within Congress County. Uh, we did this and you even noted in this report that we had an increase of permits that have been pulled since that time, and there has been a small growth, not exponential growth, but a small growth within the industry. And I think uh, that's more, more than powerful. So it's, I see success in what we've done in the past to this point. Um, we can always talk about the feds legalizing it. They've been talking about it for years until it happens. I'm not counting on it, but that would be definitely, I think, uh, more of a, it would destabilize the market. I think it might go towards a positive direction at that point because of uh, states that don't necessarily have product, but that's neither here nor there now. So I just thank you for the report. It looks good to me. Um, and the information's definitely gonna account to uh, where I make my decision today.
Supervisor Garamendi?
Doug, I'd like to thank you on the thorough report and gathering that data. Um, and I think it's important for the board to remember that this is, this represents well in excess of five hundred direct jobs, which next to government and healthcare, is our largest private industry, private industry by far. In fact, it exceeds the amount of jobs that existed when the um, cement plant was going back in the day. Um, I, I take the philosophy of always, uh, as, as someone wise once told me, Mark, it's always better to shear the sheep rather than slaughter the sheep. And so, you know, this is our largest ag product in the county and uh, we'll share it and not slaughter it. And I, I pray that if we went too big, we'd end up uh, killing our proverbial golden goose. And how many metaphors can I mix in one speech? So, so uh, thank you very much for the work and I'm in support of this.
Sure. Any other comments? Supervisor Hubbard?
I was gonna say thank you for the report again and, and I really want to support the, the people that are doing this right. So thank you.
Sure. Is it? Okay, I'll open up public comments. Mr. Bolger?
Good morning, almost afternoon. Um, thank you, Mr. Oliver, for that report. I think that the Emerald Cup is probably gonna have him come as a keynote speaker pretty soon here. He seems to have the economics of California cannabis pretty well dialed, so my hat's off to you there, sir. Um, as I was working this morning on the farm, I tuned in to uh, I'll plug it again, Calaveras Community TV. Thank you, Susan. And uh, listening to that first uh, regular agenda item, I'm like, God, this is just manna falling from the sky right now. What a perfect way to start this board meeting when we've got this discussion later. Um, as I stated previous, I think, you know, that presentation was spot-on. You know, we've got to prop up people who've made investments in this community. Now, I'm nothing but grateful for the last couple of years of reduction, the sixty percent. As I think the numbers point out, it saved a lot of people. Um, it's been a help and um, I can tell you this, we're looking at slightly better numbers, but no one in this industry is living in high cotton. You know, we're not getting much past making payroll, paying taxes, paying fees, and planting again next year. Now, we can all hope and pray, I'd love to come back here and say it's back at a thousand bucks a pound, tax the hell out of me, but we're not there yet. And I don't think that's ever gonna happen again, and you'll probably never hear me say those words ever. But um, you know, we have to be, both as an industry and you guys as a government entity, uh, we're at an inflection point. In October of two thousand twenty-four, these unused permits go to heaven. Um, I think we've gotta make some incentive for the local industry to want to pursue planting these other permits before we lose them. And um, hey, I'm just a small perdunk farmer in the middle of the sticks. You guys are dealing with high-level budgets way above my head. I'm not gonna try and act like I understand what balance in, you know, the county budget is. But I know in our industry or any kind of commodity production, sometimes you gotta cut a deal to make the sale happen. And right now, when we've got Humboldt at zero percent tax rate, we've got all these other counties that are based on a sliding scale percentage of income, man, we're still high. And I'm looking at, I've got two other rights to apply that I don't know if I can make it pencil. And it would really be sad to see those go away because that's a lot of revenue for the county. And I mean, if there's only ninety-two, I think, in use, that leaves what, fifty, sixty, ninety? I don't know the exact number, but there's still a lot left on the table. So I know I've said it before, I'll say it again, just make us competitive. You know, we've got other counties that were really chasing behind their tax rate, or you know, their tax rate. And um, I'd like to see this industry fully realize its potential locally. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Other public comments? One more, maybe?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your work. It's a lot of work taking care of the county like you do. Everything Mark said, I would ditto on. Um, it's been a better year. It's not been a good year, but it's been a better year. So I'd like to thank you for having taken that action last December, giving us a little bit of a reprieve. I'd kinda like to rename it the tourniquet tax, because if you tighten it down, you know, it's been tightened down and we've, we've stopped the bleeding, but if we tighten it anymore, we, you know, could lose the appendage. So just kinda my poking at humor. We gotta be kinda a little bit easy on this. Um, we still have incredible competition issues. Mark mentioned some. There's also a few counties that have very large farms, hundreds of acres, and that does tend to make it tougher for the smaller farms in the area. The feds, I don't think they'll ever deschedule it too soon, but we, we face untenable banking costs. A thousand dollars a month for service fees, one percent on cash deposits. That's some pretty stiff stuff. Imagine you're balancing your checkbook and you're paying five hundred bucks a month just to have a bank account. Will we pay a thousand? So it's, we, I, I think they'll probably, the feds will get around to loosening up the banking rules for the, so that the FDIC would stop choking down the backs of a lot of the banks that kick us out really quickly. So that's kinda what, what it is. So I do recommend lowering tax and of, of course, always, um, I'd love to see you give us the ag exemption. I heard Mr. Garamendi say ag producer, and I just love those words coming out of a supervisor. That was great. But uh, please, just don't tighten the tourniquet. Thanks, and Merry Christmas to you all.
Good morning, board. Bert Schufel. Anytime. I just wanted to, I did a quick survey while I was sitting here and I asked a few people that were still producing legally in November of two thousand twenty, when the measure G was voted on, what their prices were and what they were getting. And I think that probably informed some voters' minds, but, you know, mostly tax cannabis is what they're after. Um, the average price that I was hearing was twelve hundred dollars a pound when we passed this measure. Um, right now, it's about three fifty is what I'm hearing from everyone else in the county, is what they're getting them off for. So I would just ask that we reduce the tax in relation to the price that we're getting because at two dollars a square foot, at twelve hundred dollars a pound, we all loved it and we thought it was great. And I'll plant my flag, just like Bolger, when we're getting twelve hundred bucks a pound again for outdoor grown cannabis, raise those taxes, maybe go to three, I don't know. Um, you can let me do that whenever you would like, Supervisor Stocker. Um, the uh, so I would just suggest we do that. I don't, you know, I would really appreciate the tax relief we do get. It's really helped the industry. I, as you guys see through the numbers coming in from my farm, I see that it really helps the industry just from a personal perspective, so I appreciate it. But I would just suggest maybe we just follow like a, you know, literal, follow that price with the tax rate.
Other public comments?
Chair Tofanelli, members of the board, good morning and thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Zach Travan and I'm an attorney. I've been working here for about the last five years, and during that time, I've helped stand up around fifteen local permits across about ten projects countywide. Last couple of years, when I was standing in front of you, your responsiveness to these market fluctuations, I said would be the difference between this local government and other local governments who would let their industry fail. And certainly, that's what we're seeing in Stanislaus County that is far less impacted with the cannabis industry. We've seen about twenty-five percent of operators fall off and fail due to a lack of responsive, responsiveness by local government to these market trends. And we're still fighting that battle, but piggybacking off the comments uh, that Mr. Bolger made, we have not seen a drastic increase in pricing year over year over the last two years. In April of two thousand twenty-three, the state saw about twenty percent of all of its licenses- In April of 2023, the state saw about twenty percent of all of its licenses die due to the attrition that operators are experiencing in the market. That represented about twenty-three percent of all of the state's canopy. And we would have expected to see a marginal price increase on the price per pound due to that attrition, but we have not. And what that signals to us is we still have a gross overproduction of cannabis statewide, far more than we could ever hope to distribute across legal channels currently. And so what we're facing at this point in time is competition with other heavily impacted jurisdictions that have a high volume of cannabis production, competing for distribution in heavily impacted retail markets like down in LA. And what we've been experiencing in the last few seasons and are currently experiencing now is large distributor buyers come up, they shop our product. We give them a price that we feel is competitive and that we need to achieve in order to pay the bills. And they say, okay, we'll come back later. They drive two, three hours up to Humboldt Mendocino, and because of the lower tax obligation, those guys are able to provide a lower price, and they are currently beating us in the market. So where we are extremely grateful for the sixty percent reduction in taxation here, in order to remain competitive from a market perspective, we could do a little better. And I couldn't think of a more timely presentation as far as retention of existing businesses. This is the way that we're gonna help retain these businesses. So I would strongly encourage you, at the discretion of this board, to go a little further and bolster the opportunity of these operators to continue on and thrive in this county, providing jobs, revenue, and economic activity. So thank you for your time.
Any other public comments in the room? Seeing none, is there any online? Okay, I'll close the public comments, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Stoppa, your light's on.
You know, the industry, they pay, that's taxes we pay. They pay the employment taxes. I mean, with a small business, I couldn't imagine, after everything they pay, plus the tax we add on, plus what they have to deal with with the state, doing owner's equity withdrawal, trying to make that pencil out. Because they pay the taxes every business pays, plus what we charge them for the cultivation tax and what the state does. And then the thought, you know, when we first put forward this Measure G, redoing Measure C, the thought process was to guard the county from potential thoughts of diversion and everything because, or people not necessarily penciling out what the actual pounds they were doing. But that was like, there was a price per ounce or pound that rode out, and so we went to square footage. And then now we're at this point, you know, some people, something could fall at the bottom, and they can, you know, they could have a forty-three thousand square foot farm, and not one ounce gets sold off the farm because a fire happens or something else, a disaster. No fault of their own, they ran everything perfect that year, but they're still charged that two dollars per square foot. You know, no other business I know of really has to do that inside California or the US. Gross receipts is a thought for the future, not asking for anything this time because we're well away from making a change like that. But it's a thought for the future, gross receipts, because that's what's actually sold, and a percentage of what's actually sold is what should be taxed, you know, based on transaction and what works in a capitalist society.
But that, I'd entertain making a motion if there, but I would like to hear any thoughts or anything any of the other board members have prior to.
I was just wondering what type of incentives we could put forth for those additional permits, whether the board would even consider that.
Yeah, that's a good one. I mean, ultimately, increasing the amount of cultivation is related directly to the price of startup and the price of the product. We were fortunate, and thank you for bringing that up, because it's something I'd left off my short burst of information. But we had anticipated going into, you know, two years ago, going into losing ten percent of our permit holders. And in response, you know, your board made these changes, and we end up gaining nine permits. So there was a big turnaround just by making this decision. A competitive tax rate is really the only thing that I can think of because ultimately, we can continue to draw down on streamlining processes and making it easier to obtain and maintain the permit. That's not as significant a savings. I mean, we might be able to retool and reduce the cost of the permit, but that's a one-shot deal. And it's only, you know, you're only saving, you know, maybe ten thousand dollars or whatever that boils out to be, but that's a one-shot deal. The ongoing annual expenses are, you know, what's making businesses decide, am I gonna commit or am I not gonna commit? So I mean, much of it mechanically is out of any development department's hands. There is a cost to provide services. And we can make it faster, that equates to money, but nowhere near what we're talking about here.
Thank you.
Doug, this isn't a part of today's discussion, but we, and next year, we're gonna take back some seventeen-nine-five, do some fixing on that, just because we know more than we did then.
Nine point two two.
That as well, yes.
Yeah. We've asked for that to come back a few times.
Thank you.
I'd love to see that.
Yeah, it'd be a good point to have that, this broader discussion, when we bring those back.
If it's the rule of your board, did I add that to this committee that we're going to have? Then absolutely, I can make that a report out.
On?
On what to do about the taxation.
We got a lot of items to cover under those items already, so.
What's one more?
It's gonna be part of the conversation, no matter what.
No matter what, that's great.
No matter what, it's gonna be part of the conversation.
I'll drop in my pencil.
Thank you, Doug.
Very much, thank you.
Um, it's all right.
Absolutely.
Martin, you brought up whether incentives. I think we need to be cognizant of where we've been at, and I actually seen these actuals and estimates. We didn't lose as much as we thought we would each year. You know, because we're anticipating the loss originally, and then with the reduction, we did an estimate, and the estimate was quite a bit lower than what the actual was after we made it known that we're gonna enforce. Right? Am I correct?
I don't know, it was a combination.
Yeah, a combination of both their own, absolutely. But look in these numbers, we haven't seen a significant loss of revenue. That said, we're dancing a fine line with our general fund as it is right now. And we've done a lot of work, and I want the board to be cognizant is, look, if we're looking for a benefit, that benefit I want us to return on, that makes the bottom line, and can we make that happen? So I'm definitely comfortable with where we're at. I need to see where a return is. I mean, we seem to part of the return. And I'm sure some of these permits, by the end of this next year, are gonna wanna be put online. It's like, you know, use or lose. What happens to those, whether they go to heaven or they sit someplace else is another conversation to be had. So if you're considering making more than sixty percent, I definitely would like to hear a justification on return before I, okay, so. I'll make a motion for the building officials sixty percent and keep it the same.
Number two.
Second?
By Supervisor Stoppa, second by Supervisor Garamendi, you all in favor? Aye. Pose, passes five zero. Move on to the next item on our agenda. Supervisor announcements in compliance with Government Code 53232.3D. Board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of a local agency and may make other announcements or report out. We'll start with Supervisor Hubbard.
I wanted to thank our CEO for her presentation at the Good Morning Calaveras. Thank you. Great attending a lot of different Christmas festivities. On the second, I went to Bear Valley to a reception and met the new owners, and I'm very excited about what they're bringing hopefully to Bear Valley. They are skiers, they own Dodge Ridge, so they're sort of a more hands-on company. I attended the Arnold Library celebration, and just wanted to also put a shout out. They do a great job with packaging up last-minute gifts. If anybody needs a Christmas gift, you can go in there, and they prepack puzzles and books, and it's wonderful. On the sixth, I was at Epoch. On the seventh, I was on the Agency on Aging. We have six vacancies for Calaveras and the Agency on Aging for the board, the advisory board, and I would love to be able to fill those. It doesn't take, you don't have to have any prior experience. It's ultimately just a commitment for an hour every other month. I'd also like to say that they did a workshop on Alzheimer's here in the county that was incredibly well-attended. The majority was Calaveras County residents who are dealing with this disease, and it was very beneficial for us. And the last was last weekend, I got to do the Spartan Race, and I really wanted to thank Wendy Alt for guilting me into it, and for Tim giving me the confidence not to back out. So it was really fun, it was great. There were, I think, seven of us that did it, it was great. Teresa, you're on next. And that's it.
Supervisor Garamendi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Endless holiday events, just going through eleven communities. But what I'm required to report is I did attend the Golden State Connect Authority meeting, chaired it down in Sacramento last week. You guys have been getting regular updates on that, so that's all I have to report.
Supervisor Paulendorf?
I too attended the Bear Valley Reception with Supervisor Hubbard and also Supervisor Woodrow from Alpine County. I did want to have the board focus on the last COG meeting agenda. And there is approximately a seven-page report from Caltrans on all of the projects happening in this county. So if you go to that agenda, you will see the report and future construction projects and what that timeline is looking like. So for example, the Calaveras Bridge Project, which is happening right here in San Andres, there is a multiple repaving upgrades happening down on Highway 12 and 26. It's a very comprehensive report, and primarily because, for those of you that don't know, Dennis Ova has retired, and our new current acting District 10 individual is Mark Samuelson. I think I got it right this time. I grew that up last week, and he did attend a meeting last week and introduced himself. And so we really look forward to working with Mark into the future until they put an appointment on who the new District 10 rep will be. Marlon has gone to Caltrans District 7, so he is no longer with District 10, which is a big loss as well, as he had a lot of the bike and pedestrian projects that happened in this region.
He went home, he was thrown.
Yeah, he was from down there, and he had an opportunity to go home and be closer to his family. Jumping over to the CTA for Calaveras Standard Authority, they have retained Aston to be the architect to come up with a design. So the CTA board is looking forward to that design coming back. And then in the meantime, starting the process of working with partners in the county and Caltrans to want the designers approved to move forward with the construction. And hopefully, for all of us, we will see that construction, oh, exactly, but see that construction project in the next couple of years, and have a new CTA facility. One of the cool things though about that is that we were talking about economic development this morning. It will really open up the opportunities for more development in that area, especially with working with Caltrans to hopefully get some turning lanes or something in there to add on the businesses. And then CTA and COG do not have a meeting until February 2024.
Ted? Supervisor Stoppa?
I brought it up from Central Sierra Economic Development District. We finalized the SUDs, so that's going off to the EDA and the state and the feds. It's a broad step, it's been quite some time. I think the last time this was dealt with, Mr. Toffenelli and Ms. Paulendorf were dealing with, after it turned around in 2017, when we had the Twoloming County Economic Development Director in charge. And so we have a product finished that stayed, and the feds say it looked good.
Good.
You know, like I explained to the rest of the counties, because I'm chairing that committee, the JPA, you know, a lot of people start getting into specifics and start getting into old weeds a little bit. And it's like, you know, with SUDs, strategic plan, it's a lot like your general plan, you know, broader view from higher up, and not getting too specific. We'll give you opportunity to insert your specifics later. You know, it's overarching area for five counties. And to get into just what you want in your county kind of closes the door on certain things in other counties. So I think it's gonna work.
Good. Doug?
Ted?
I attended the COG meeting with Supervisor Paulendorf, and she's correct on Caltrans. Hopefully, we continue with a good relationship with them, with the turnover at the top. Mark seems like a very nice guy, did do a good presentation to the board. I also attended the mental health board meeting last Tuesday, and that's my report. CEO Teresa?
I have nothing to report.
Have nothing to report? County Council, nothing, okay? Ms. Clerk, you have anything to report? Well, with that, it's twelve o'clock, and we will stand adjourned for the year.